Agenda of Thursday, April 21st. Happy Founding Day. Santa Barbara's Founding Day, I think, is today. Will you please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll. Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House. Rouse.
Here.
Self.
Here.
White.
Here.
And Mayor Schneider.
Here.
I don't see any public comment, speaker slips?
There are none.
Okay. So just move on to the item at hand. Mr. Armstrong.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is the first of several departmental budget presentations, and so we're going to have each department present their budget and go through it with you. It'd be helpful at the end of each department, if the council can advise us if there's any additional information you would like from this department that we can then bring back at a later time. So if you can just kind of, if you have those kinds of issues, like if you want further data or information or analysis, then we can have the departments working on it. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Samario, and we're going to start with the Finance Department first, and I believe we've got Administrative Services, City Attorney's Office, and then the City Administrator's Office and Mayor Council Budgets.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, Bob Samario, Finance Director. And actually, before I start with Finance Department, I wanted just to have kind of walked through the documents, how it's orientated, organized, and the like. I see all of you have it, so that's great. I would, you know, one of the first things that you'll find in the document, and everything is tabbed, so it's pretty easy to look for and find things that you want, you're interested in, but one of the first sections is what we call the Budget Message. It's really a sort of a transmittal letter that provides a reasonably brief summary of this, what's going on in the city, the issues we're facing, how we're addressing some of the challenges going ahead of us next couple of years. So I think for the benefit of the public, just to get a really good sense of what's happening in the next couple of years, it's a really good read. And then beyond that, we have some summary schedules. If you go to the Summary of Sources and Uses section, or the Summary of Schedules, you'll see that one of the things you'll find is, and we talked about this on Tuesday, kind of I showed you the sources and uses of funds, kind of in a different orientation, but this just lays out all the funds within the city that we are budgeting. And if you look to the left, you see there's a long list of them. They're organized by fund type. First is the General Fund, which stands alone, but you can see we have a number of special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and internal service funds, what their sources of funds are, including any use of reserves, as well as their operating revenues, and how that money's going to be spent, at least next year. And there's one of these, it spans two pages, but if you turn the page, you'll see that the same format is scheduled for 2013, so it's the same orientation and look and feel just for two different years.
And I always say that if there was one set of pages you wanted to look at an entire city budget, figure out what was going on, this would be the one you would look at. The Sources and Uses of Funds.
Yes. And then the next section, it shows the authorized position, and we've made, you know, over the, over time, we've made improvements to how this looks and reads, and you could see that it shows by department across the city, all of the positions over time, the changes that have occurred. And then toward the bottom section, you can see the fund, the budget, I'm sorry, the positions by department and fund, and so it gives you a little bit more detail, so you can see just General Fund, what kind of positions we're proposing for next year. And then that's followed by a Capital Program Summary. It's a list by fund for those funds that have a capital program, a description and a total of how much is being spent or proposed to be spent next year on capital. What's kind of interesting about this, or good about this, is we've added, over years, the funding sources for each of these projects, because sometimes the project may come out of a streets fund, but it may have multiple funding sources, like grants and the like, or Measure A. So it's a good information to show you how are those projects being funded. In the General Fund, of course, it just comes from reserves or revenues, most lately it's been from revenues. And then the next section is what we call citywide objectives, and it's just kind of our P3, but they're, that don't relate specific to department, but are more citywide in nature. And then beyond that, it's just going department by department, and I'm going to just, you've one as an example, how it's laid out, but they're all laid out in the same format, so we'll start with the first that's in the tab, Administrative Services. We have a department summary that sort of describes the department as a whole, its mission, and some of the highlights. It gives you a summary of all the revenues and expenditures over time, along with full-time equivalent positions. And this is important to recognize that in some departments where they spend multiple funds, this is a consolidation of all those funds, so you can't really, for example, pick out, in this case, what portion is the General Fund portion of Administrative Services versus the Information Systems, which is an internal service fund, but it's collapsed into this. And then you'll see an organization chart for the department with a nice photo. And then just about all of the programs are then listed out over a two-page summary, starting with, in this example, if you look on C, I think it's C4, it shows, G4, I'm sorry, it shows your mission statement of the City Clerk's Office, it gives the program activities, sort of a description of what they do in more detail, and then kind of time back to P3, these are key objectives for next year. And then on the other side of the page, the opposing side, you'll see the details of those, of the revenues and expenses, in some cases, they may not have revenues, but a General Fund Department, I'm sorry, yes, General Fund Departments and Programs, you'll typically see, rather than fees or charges, you might see a General Fund overhead or a subsidy, and those are some of the revenues that they generate. And then, then the P3s, mostly the output measures over track over time, and those that are recommended for the following year. So that's kind of an orientation to the document. And so with the Finance Department, we are going to be starting on page G95. My presentation isn't going to sort of, isn't going to match exactly with that presentation, but at least you can kind of see the details as we kind of go through it. Right with that, we'll start, here's my outline, I'm going to just kind of give you some overview information across all the Finance Department's funds, there are three of them, and then we'll focus more about most of our time on the Finance Department, the portion that's in the General Fund, looking at the divisions and programs, our expenditure and revenue details, some budget highlights, and then the P3s. And then we'll shift over to our Self-Insurance Fund, the second of three funds within department, and then finish with Community Promotions, which is not really part of the finance, but it's something we cover because nobody else does. So an organizational chart of the Finance Department, you can see that there are six functional areas below the Administration. On the left, you see Budget Management, Channel Services, and Treasury, and on the right, and I'll talk more detail in a moment, but Accounting on the right. And then the two boxes that are cutted represent those, those functions that are outside of the General Fund. Environmental Services, headed by Matt Forrester, is part of the Solid Waste Fund, and then Risk Management, headed by Mark Howard, is in our Self-Insurance Fund. This is a summary of the total budget by fund, and you can see for the Finance Department as a whole across the city, it's a pretty large department, $31.7 million. It's a little misleading because it's sort of overstated in the Solid Waste Fund in the bottom right, because of the monies we collect and pass through to the two-haulers, Allied Waste and Marburg, for trash services, but yet they are the biggest fund in the department, $18.3 million, but just one program. On the top right, you'll see the General Fund portion is actually the smallest of the three, 12 programs, but $4.4 million because it's primarily staff. And on the left, Self-Insurance Fund, 20%, it's $9 million operation with four programs. So turning our attention to the General Fund portion, here are, again, the divisions and programs, and I just, I just want to briefly go through the kind of the programs, what we do, because I think for some, for some of the new councilmembers, we haven't heard, you haven't heard this, so I think it's important to kind of know a little bit about what we do. The Administration piece on the left is really just me and an executive assistant, but I also, we have the Budget Management folks, that's Michael Pease and Jonathan Abad, they're the ones that quarterback the budget process. On the bottom left, Accounting, that's really a lot of our back-office work with payroll, we have two and a half people to handle the payroll for the entire city, over 1,000 employees, not counting seasonal hourly employees. Accounting Services, we have really two people, an accounting manager and a senior accountant, who handle all the accounting and financial reporting for the city, and it's a big, you can imagine, a big operation, but also provide services to departments for information they might need. Our Accounts Payable folks, it's really one and a half people who handle that. All the money that goes out the door goes through them, they pay all the bills, $250 million worth. Utility Billing, they're the folks who do all the billing on behalf of water, wastewater, and trash, and all their time is charged out and recovered 100% from those three operations, such as self-recovering, or cost, fully cost-recovered operation. On the, on the top right, Treasury Division includes cashiering and collection. On the flip side, they collect all the money that comes into the city, whether it's over the counter, by mail, by wire transfer. It's about, again, about $250 million a year that comes through their office, and they make sure it comes in, is controlled, safeguarded, and accounted for. Revenue Cash Management, tracking our non-departmental revenues primarily, the taxes, but also are responsible for investing the city's $150 million approximately in auto funds to make sure it's safe, liquid, and earning a reasonable yield. And then lastly, Licensing Permits, they administer Title V of our municipal code, lots of types of permits, massage permits, taxi cab permits, and the like. The largest piece is, of course, the Business License Tax, that generates about $2 million a year, and then they administer that program. And then on the bottom right, last but not least, General Services, it's purchasing operation, making sure that our departments are keeping in compliance with their purchasing code. They're facilitators, but they're also sort of, you know, officers, and making sure that people are doing the right things, but helping them to move the process along so they can get their goods and services. Central Warehouse, it used to be a bigger operation, we used to keep a lot of stuff there, things that we are now getting, like office supplies and the like, those things no longer we carry because they're really available on a just-in-time basis. You can order something from, from an office supply store and get it the same day, so there's no need carrying all that. We really left there with things that have a longer turnaround time and are probably needed in emergencies, but meters, valves, things that have, again, a longer turnaround time in ordering that we might need in a short instant. And then lastly, Mail Courier Services, we have one individual who handles all the incoming and outgoing mail, both inter-office and outgoing, or U.S. Post Office mail. Looking at these divisions by division, or the appropriations by division, you can see the bottom right, Accounting represents the biggest slice, $1.5 million, 11.15 FTEs. The Treasury Division at $1.3 million, 10 and 3/4 FTEs. And Administration is the smallest, the 3.8 FTEs, and it's, you wonder, how do we get .8, because we allocate people's time differently, and part of my time is allocated to other divisions, so that's why we end up with these unusual fractions. And then General Services at the bottom, 8.15 FTEs, but our total budget in the General Fund is about $4.4 million. As we did Tuesday, I wanted just to show you in our department how things attract over time. You can see by major, what we call major object categories, on the left, salaries and benefits, supplies and services, allocated costs, those are the amounts that were charged by internal service funds, whether it be motor pool, information systems, and the like, any special projects we may have, and anything we just put as other. But overall, you can see that we've sort of, on a net basis, reduced our costs since 2009, or 2012. You can see our budget's still higher than 2011, just because of certain costs that are going up, but overall, we're still down in relation to 2009 by 2.4%. And that number does include the assumed concessions, and you'll see this in all the departments, and that's important for you to note that. What we've done is that $1.8 million, we talked about Tuesday, that we're assuming to come from concessions, whether it be furloughs or other things, we've actually taken those monies and spread them over all the various departments, salaries and benefits category, so this reflects closely to what we expect to see next year. But even with that reduction, we're still, see, a 2.4 reduction from 2009. Special Project, this is the money that we pass through to Santa Barbara Channels, we used to, we called CMAC. It's money that now has been accounted for in the non-departmental, department, so it's no longer in this department, so you can see the shift from 2010 to 11. And then overall, reduction of 10 and a half percent since 2009, but really, when you adjust for that CMAC number, it's a 2% net reduction. But for the most part, you can see everything is just stable, we haven't really changed much, all of our costs are relatively stable from year to year since 2009. On the revenue side, we actually do generate revenues in our department, and I'll just indicate to you, in the bottom right, $4 million total revenues, including the overhead we recover. If I go back to the previous slide, our budget of $4.4 million is almost fully recovered through revenues, and the balance of $300,000 or so is what comes from tax subsidy. The first line you'll see is Utility Billing Admin Fee, we generate about $160,000, and it's accounted for in our department, but probably it's more akin to a non-departmental revenue. It's money that we receive from our two-haulers for refuse, Allied Waste and Marburg, they pay us 5% of the total bills for the services we provide them to do the billing on their behalf. Obviously, it doesn't cost us $868,000, the nominal cost, or incremental cost is much, much less, but it's something that was part, agreed to as, in the franchise agreements that were executed a number of years ago. We generate a small amount of revenues from miscellaneous licenses. Our fees and charges, that is one item, that's the utility billing, late fee that we implemented in 2010, one of our, our measures to help balance our budget. You can see that in 2010, we earned almost $188,000. We budgeted this year conservatively at $175,000. Next year, we are expecting to generate about $210,000, and we bumped our budget accordingly. The next item is a fee that we charge to the downtown organization. We do the billing for them, for, for all the businesses, as part of the Business Improvement District, and we collect a small fee for that. And then a new item this year, for next year, actually, is a T-Bed, it's a Business Improvement District that was created between the City of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Conference and Visitors Bureau, it's that, it's that charge on the hotels for per room, and for our services, since we are going to essentially be collecting the money and remitting it back to them, we're charging them $25,000 a year to do so. And then the overhead credit, as you all know, it's what we recover from enterprise funds. Some budget highlights, we are proposing to add a senior accountant position costing $96,000 next year. A portion of this would be funded from overhead at $50,000, so the net cost of the General Fund would be $46,000. And I could talk a lot, a lot about this, but essentially, this is a position that was approved about three years ago, and before we had a chance to fill it, when we had the economic downturn, and we're all looking to make cuts, this is a position that was vacant at the time, and we chose to eliminate that, and at this point, we're, we're requested to restore that position. We have, as I said, two people in our Accounting Services Program, in my opinion, well below what we should have, and it's really not this, this Finance Department that really suffers, but it's other departments who look to us for information, for example, looking for reserve balances and other financial information. We are having a hard time providing those services, and I think that there's been, I think if we talk to them, they'll say that's really a position that's needed. We're also adding--
I'll comment on that as well, because this is something that, with, with the cutbacks we're continuing to make, you know, adding a position is, in my mind, was very difficult. And, and, but in a couple of cases, when we actually talked with all the department heads, and we said, you know, what do you think, because, and they were basically saying, we're not getting the level of services we need to get from accounting, and it's affecting our ability to get the job done. And with all of the additional things that we've, accounting duties that have been added over the years, a lot by governmental regulations, the new GASB requirements that we're, that were required to incur, we just felt that we needed to put this back in, just to run the organization, so, but there was a lot of discussion on this one. It's nice that it's funded half through, through the overhead rate, but it's also something we, we're just woefully short in terms of accounting staff, and we felt we needed to put this in.
The next item is, we are adding or proposing to add $50,000 in costs, along with $50,000 in additional or new revenues to expand our revenue audit program.
Excuse me, Mr. Samario. Have you addressed the $50,000 in revenues yet? I didn't hear it. Have we talked about that?
Are you--
Stuart says--
Okay, I couldn't hear it, so thank-- Yeah, the second bullet is the 50,000, that's, this is to, again, it's a, it's an additional appropriation, but it's funded from additional revenues that we budgeted to expand our revenue audit program. We do some limited work now, we used to do a lot more in the past, but with the reductions of staff, we've been only, only able to put in a limited amount of time into this. But we think it's important in, in two areas particularly, one is in the Business License Tax area, and the other is our TOT, our bed tax area. And just before I get into that, I do want to say that we still, under contract, audit our sales tax revenues and make sure we're collecting what we're supposed to. Muni Services, a consultant we use, and it's all contingency-based, so whatever they find, they get a portion of that, but it's something we thought was important, and we had considered cutting a few years ago, but we thought, you know, it's an important revenue for us, and they have found a lot of money for us, so it's something we're already doing. But in the area of Business License Taxes and TOT, we've not done enough. We used to audit hotels about three a year, and as part of the cuts we made over the last several years, we've cut that program out. And it's not really a lot, because we have a lot of hotels, but when, when I think hotels realize that there's an audit program out there where there's potential that did be audited, funny things happen, you, all of a sudden, you see revenues start to go up before you do anything. I, I used to be an auditor, and even just the announcement of these kind of programs would cause revenues to go up before you actually did any audits. So we think it's important, just the fear of an audit, but we would audit about three a year, at least portion of the money would go toward that. We would also do a little more work on the area of Vacation Rentals. I think about a year and a half ago now, we, we initiated an effort to identify vacation rentals that were not in compliance with our, with our TOT ordinance, and were not paying, of course, the 10% or 12%. We identified a number, sent out letters, and as a result, we were, we are now getting about $100,000 a year through this effort, but that was just based on an initial effort, there's a lot more work we can need to do. And our, our goal here is to allocate some of that time to some temporary staff or hourly staff to, to, just keep on that program, to make sure we're identifying any new vacation rentals, and make sure that these folks are in compliance. I see a question.
Yes, Mr. Samario. On the vacation rentals, so are we citing the people that are out of compliance, or they assume they're going to be allowed to continue? What, I don't understand--
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, we are assuming that they are, whatever zoning issues that they are dealing with, that's really, ours is to make sure that they're in compliance with the TOT ordinance, so if they're operating a vacation rental, and they are therefore generating those kinds of revenues, they should be in compliance and be paying us their 12% based on the gross receipts.
But even if there's a, like a zoning or licensee issue?
Yeah, it's, that's absolutely true. I mean, we, we know it's kind of a mixed signal, but our zoning is really on a complaint basis, so if we get calls, or the planning folks get calls, and say these folks are operating a business out of, out of compliance with the zoning ordinance, then they will be pursued and potentially shut down. So, you know, we have two different tracks going on here, that's, are sort of--
Definitely a policy zoning issue that--
We're going to be talking about--
We need, well, we have to figure out what to do about it, right? It's sort of the--
It is.
Finance right-hand is doing something, and the zoning left-hand is doing something else, and--
Yep. I always tell the story of Al Capone, who even though he was making money illegally, he still owed taxes on those monies, and that's what they eventually got him on.
Oh, dear.
Exactly.
Mr. House and Ms. Self had questions. Mr. House?
So I just want to be sure I understand, so the additional expenditures there for the revenue audit, your intention is to offset that by, of course, the additional revenue, and it'll not be just offset, there'll be a plus for the effort?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, that's a, that's a good point. We've just sort of roughly estimated what we can generate in revenue. I know the first time, and I'll speak to this, when we implemented some of this data matching work, in a couple of years, we generated over $100,000, not of ongoing necessarily, but some ongoing portions, so I think there's potential there for us to generate more than the 50,000, but we just wanted to be conservative and estimate what we think--
Sure, of course. Just want to get the intention, and then, remember we were talking about the, the dilemma with online agencies that book in our hotels, and they, there's a strange way that they report what they've collected, where they don't actually report the entire amount to the City of Santa, give it back to us what, what they've collected. Are you, is that part of this, or is this something you're going to be working on?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, I'll let Mr. White speak to that, but no, this is a separate issue we're dealing with for vacation rentals.
Okay, I don't mean to put us off on a sidetrack, but I'd be interested to know.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, it's probably a good time to mention, we're, we're working on that. You may recall, we had a couple of closed sessions about a special counsel working for the city and other, several other cities, particularly the California coastal cities, against the online travel companies and the apparently clearly inappropriate way they calculated our TOT. We're still working on it. It's sort of caught up in, at the Court of Appeal level. The City of Anaheim was one of the leaders, the City of LA, and I know for a fact that the City of Anaheim is at the Court of Appeal level, and so we're sort of waiting to see what the courts are going to say, but--
Are we a friend in those, you know--
You know, I know the league is, and I know, so I think only through the league.
I see. Okay, very interesting, so it turns out, and then, just one second, oh, and then on that last piece for Mr. Rouse, I mean, it's a very interesting thing, it has been sort of brokered to get us to this particular point, but that, that whole issue of responding vigorously to complaints, meanwhile, collecting what really is deserved to the city for the transient occupancy side, is something we discussed quite a long time, well, a year and a half ago, and that's where we've been pursuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, on the TOT issue and the online, there's some legislation going through in Congress, and I think also in the state, so this is very, who knows where this is going to end up, and, but that's, that's another layer to it, so-- So I know the legislative committee is looking at things and want to make sure we fight this because it's siphoning money away from local-
And that is on our radar, legislative committee. I mean, they charge at, they charge the customer at the full retail rate and they report to the city at the wholesale rate. So they keep the difference, which seems very disingenuous.
Okay, Ms. Self?
Thank you. Did I understand that we have a consultant or an auditor for other programs that is not higher, I mean, they're contracted by the city rather than an employee? Would it not make sense to do something like this where we get a percentage of what they get rather than having to take on the responsibility of another employee?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Self, yes, again, we do use a consultant for the sales tax revenues, which is, you know, one of our largest revenues. I think for the vacation rentals, it's probably better to hire somebody, well, first of all, for the outside audits, we're going to have to hire a CPA firm or something comparable to that to do the work. It won't be on a contingency fee basis because CPAs can't work on a fee basis that way or contingency basis. The work on the vacation rentals, we anticipate we'd bring in an hourly person, somebody much less expensive than a consultant, who can just go through the websites, look for vacation rentals, do some data search to figure out what their addresses are and then send letters under the direction of a treasury manager. So the cost will be a lot less than rather than using a consultant. So there will be a temporary staff versus a regular employee we would hire.
Thank you.
Just so it's clear, the senior accountant position is not part of that revenue process. That's to do basic accounting work.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When community development comes in, could we have a little bit of information about that enforcement side of things? Now, we're talking about the TOT on this end. Mr. House used the term vigorous enforcement. I'd appreciate hearing with a status of the enforcement program at that time.
Sure.
Ms. Self, did you have another question? No? Okay, okay, Mr. Samario, go ahead.
Okay, and I think it's important, so I apologize. I just want to point out also the business license taxes, what we're going to be doing. We get data from the State Board of Equitization and the Franchise Tax Board. It's data that we use and can convert to align with the data we have in our business license system. And what we're looking for are mismatches where we see a business that reports taxes to the Franchise Tax Board or to State Board of Equitization where they're not paying a business license and that's how we're able to identify non-compliant businesses. And we haven't been able to put much time into that lately because of just lack of staffing, but with these monies, we think we can expand that more. I'm not really sure how we're going to spread these monies around, but I think it's going to go a long way in helping generate more revenue for the city. And then lastly, another highlight is the fact, as you know, we are going to initiate the FMS replacement project starting next year. Some performance measures, I'll go through these quickly. We are going to be hoping to select a vendor by February 2012 for an FMS replacement. And tying back to what I just mentioned, our plan next year is to locate 125 unlicensed businesses using periodicals mostly. The Franchise Tax Board and State Board of Equitization data sources, that matching isn't being done really to any great extent. The 125 is really just from looking at periodicals and driving by State Street and seeing what new businesses are on board. We used to locate somewhere around 130, or double that actually, but we're down to 125, which is actually a fair number, I was surprised to see that, but just through the periodicals and drive-bys. We also expect to receive the GFOA or Government Finance Officers Award or Association of Budget Award for the budget you're just looking at now. Once it's adopted, we file that in October. We also expect to complete the comprehensive annual financial report by December of this year. We also expect to prepare all the 2011 W-2 forms by January 24th. The deadline, federal deadline is January 31st. And related to the utility billing system we actually implemented a couple of years ago, we are pretty close now to implementing the online piece where customers can go online, look at their statements, look at history, look at usage and all those great things. So we're hoping that by July, that'll be rolled out. But one of the features that will enable our customers is to receive their bills electronically or really it's just an automatic email that goes out and says, your statement is ready. Some of you may have that already for other services and it'll provide them a link that they can, they'll take them to the website and they can look at their statement and then, of course, pay with their credit card online. And we'll be promoting that in the next, before rollout, both the fact that it's coming onboard, the online system, but as well as the electronic receipt of their paper bills or their bills. And then lastly, one of our objectives is to issue purchase orders under $25,000 within 15 counter days of receipt of the completed requisition.
Mr. White had a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Where are we on auto pay? I know that it's in some places, is it in all of the different big billing processes at this point? Am I clear on, are you-
Yeah, are you referring to the utility bills or?
Yes. Utility and waterfront and I guess those would be the two big ones, right?
Mr. Livingston?
Mr. White, Madam Mayor, the answer to that is, right now, we do have auto pay fully available to anybody who's a utility billing customer. We also have auto pay function set up for the waterfront and for the airport operations. So that, we brought in the airport piece recently and so it all seems to be working pretty well and a lot of customers are really happy with that.
Thank you.
And just to add to that, we have also added credit card capabilities in some of our operations as of, just recently, so like waterfront, starting a credit card program, if that's correct. And then, so just credit card is another way of payment. We've implemented various parts of the city as opposed to just a check or cash coming in.
Question. Do we lose 3% on credit card billings?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, the rate varies, but it is somewhere around 2%, 3% which is paid by the department.
Thank you.
So there is a cost to it. So unless there are any questions on the general fund piece?
Can you actually, I did have a question. Can you go back to the utility billing admin fee and just explain again?
Sure.
What you said?
Sure.
Okay.
We have, in 2010, we implemented a late fee. It was really in part because we were getting a lot of, I'm sorry, you're talking about the admin fee?
Talking about the $860,000.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
Yes, okay.
Pursuant to the franchise agreements we have with both haulers and essentially they're the same, they pay the City of Santa Barbara 5% of the bill and that money goes to the general fund and ostensibly is to recover our costs for doing the billing on their behalf. Some agencies have the haulers do all the billing. We do the billing on behalf of our haulers and our customers and we then remit them their share of the monies we collect. And for those services, we get a 5% and it works out to be about $860,000 a year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Rouse, did you have a question?
Follow-up question on that, same, Mr. Samario. You mentioned some other municipalities have the haulers bill directly. Why do we do it through us and do we recover fully?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, I'm not, I think historically, we always did the billing. I prefer that. I think some, it's just how things evolve. I kind of like being in charge of the purse strings, so I'd rather have us collect the money and remit to them. I'm not sure how it evolved and why others do it differently, but that's how I would prefer to do it. And yeah, we definitely, as I've indicated, the $860,000, we don't, if I were to guess how much incremental cost is associated with doing the billings, where we already do water and wastewater, it's a consolidated bill, it's in the few thousandths of dollars.
And I would say it's a win-win. I think if you're the haulers and you had to send out, you know, tens of thousands of bills every month, collect that money, account for it, also chase people for non-payment, you know, it probably would cost them more than this to do that. And so they pay us, we do it, we remit the money to them. They don't have to follow up on that. And of course, we're able to combine it with our water bill, our wastewater bill and get the economies of scale.
Well, it just seems like of all the utilities you pay that are done by other contractors or private and/or public utilities, the one we do is the waste, so this was-
And if you think about it, we're contracting with them to provide the refuse service, so they're doing it under our contract with us. And so then we use this money to pay that for those services.
Okay, moving on to the self-insurance fund. We have three programs. The workers' compensation program is one of our biggest and it's really a program that is administered according, in accordance with federal and state law. You know, as we have employees who at times get injured while they're working and they're entitled to certain benefits and so our folks in the workers' compensation program administer that program. One of the things we've done in the last several years more aggressively is bring folks back even though they're injured. They have only a certain amount of restrictions, we can bring them back in what's called a modified duty program. And it really saves us money and productivity because these folks can do productive things rather than being, you know, at home injured and then just receiving benefits. And I'm going to jump down below to the occupational safety and health program because that's a program that we've been, done a lot better in and making sure that we have a safe working environment because if we can prevent injury from the first place, it really saves us a lot of money, even with the modified duty program. And so we've done a really good job in training folks, looking for areas where we have injuries and focus on those more. And in the middle, this liability program, it's just a program that is, you know, for folks who get injured as a result of city, where the city's at fault, where there's trips and falls, trees falling on their cars or whatever the case might be, our folks there are in charge of investigating those incidences and adjusting those claims and paying when necessary. And to make sure we do have a problem of like a raised sidewalk, that those things are, the proper individuals, like public workers are notified so they can correct those hazards. So basically here, the program or the self-insurance fund by major object category, you can see most of the money that we spend there, the $5.3 million goes towards claims and insurance, 79%, whether it be for liability, workers' comp or just miscellaneous and property insurance. Only a small percentage of overall budget goes to salaries and benefits, supplies and services and allocated costs. This is the sources and uses of funds over time and you can see that the revenues since 2009 have been pretty stable, expenses have been stable, but the one thing that has not been in this money that we've rebated back to the various funds and basically all the funds, primarily the general fund and enterprise funds as well. But in 2009, you can see $4.7 million, almost 4.8, was rebated back to most of the general fund, a little bit went to enterprise funds to help with our, you know, first year of the economic impacts. And I'll show you in a moment where that money comes from because it's a lot of money. You kind of raises the question, well, how do we even have that kind of money? In 2010, we rebated back to $780,000 to the general fund. In 2011, not a rebate, but you might recall, the council approved putting money into our unfunded or underfunded police and fire pension. It's that old pension we have proposed that it's a closed system or closed pension, but we have some folks that are still around. And then 2012, we're recommending an additional $3.7 million in rebates. Most of that is to the enterprise funds, about half a million dollars is to the general fund. You'll see in 2009, we actually generated some fair amount of what we call other revenue. It includes an Excel rebate. Excel, I can't remember what it stands for, but it's basically a joint powers authority that it's a risk sharing pool and for excess liability. We're self-insured for a certain portion and back in 2009, we were self-insured for half a million dollars and the rest was covered through this joint powers authority. And every once in a while, based on performance, we can, we are allowed to get rebates from monies that weren't needed. We pay in a premium and if we do well, we get money back and in that year, we received $750,000. So that was, that was great. We also received a litigation settlement, which is really because we paid above the self-insured retention or our deductible and got that money reimbursed from Excel. So here's the, you know, I was spending, looking at this yesterday and I was trying to figure out what's a good way to describe why we had so much money available and I just decided I'm going to go back to our cappers in the last seven years or so. And I just presented to you how much cash we had in each of those fiscal year ending June 30th. So June 30, 2004, we had $7 million in cash and what the claims liabilities were that the actuaries told us we had, we had to establish. And theoretically, we were supposed to have money for representing or to cover that $10 million. And in that year, we were actually $3.4 million in the hole. It's amazing that we were in the hole seven years ago. In 2005, we got back into balance. Our liabilities started to go down because we had better results. That's where we first started seeing indications of a good program and good results. So our liabilities went down to a little below $9 million and our cash is about the same, so we're essentially balanced. And then 2006 started, things started to change. We were still charging the departments based on what the actuary was told, we needed to charge them based on potential claims coming up, but all the while, our liabilities numbers were going down. So we actually, at one point, had $12.7 million in 2008 of cash compared to the $5.7 million of liabilities that we were supposed to have. And again, those numbers are going down dramatically. In 2008, it went down by $3 million because, again, the actuaries come in and do a study and they say, geez, you know, we've done so well. We told you you needed $8.6 million a couple of years ago or $9.4 a couple of years ago, you only need 5.7. Immediately, that makes cash available to us. And that was then the first year that we started seeing some rebates, actually 2009. So I just wanted to show you this because I think this shows that over time, how the cash relates to the liabilities and why we've been able to come up with monies that we've rebated back to not only the general fund, but enterprise funds.
Mr. Rouse has a question.
Mr. Smart, is it, does the net, is that retained or is that, are those closed cases? How do you determine that within a certain fiscal year?
Yeah, again, this is just a comparison of, Councilmember Rouse, of cash we had in the bank versus what our outstanding claim liabilities were based on outstanding claims we actually had and what we expected to pay on those claims.
But you would also have to extend that out over another calendar year, isn't it?
And those monies will be paid over time, but still, you know, when they tell us they need, for example, let's pick 2006, when they tell us we need $9.4 million in the bank, that's what they expect us to pay over the life of that claim, whether it be three, four or five years, and therefore we need that kind of cash. So we obviously had plenty of cash in 2006 to cover those expenses, but we also had a million and a half above what we needed, really excess monies.
That's incurred then, incurred over the number of years, is that right?
And what the actuary does is they look at our claim, or the claims we have and they say, you need to reserve so much money for each one of these claims. And then they also, they also make some assumptions about, what is it, incurred but not reported, IBNR of claims that have not yet been filed. And of course, what's happened is, is that our number, especially in the workers' comp site, our number of accidents has dropped by more than 50%. And so we were, and you got to catch up because we're still charging the departments, assuming they're going to have the same number of accidents they had over the past two or three years, and that's going down. And then also by good claim management, we're also then not paying out as much on the claims. And so when the actuary comes back and looks at the new claims we have and it's way below what they'd expected us to have, and also we're doing a better job of managing the claims and they've slowly brought our liability down. And one of the things when you look at this is remember back, you know, some of the concern about the, about the general fund reserves, well, what you didn't see on the general fund reserves is back in 2004, we had a $3.4 million hole here that we now have, and this doesn't come up on the general fund reserve. So we are, probably we're in better shape than we, you know, at least a little better shape here if you take this into consideration.
Plus, our employees aren't getting ill or injured, which is another good thing.
That's the primary goal.
Right. Keep going.
So this is just the same story. I wanted just to kind of show you how things trend over time. Pretty stable budget. Our workers' comp claims in the middle and liability claims have, you know, we saw a dip in 2010, but back up in 11 and 12. So generally a stable budget except for you can see the rebates at the bottom, how they've trended over time. A lot of money going back to general fund departments, general fund departments and other enterprise funds. And also wanted to point out, in 2009, we did have 5.2 full-time equivalents. You know, one of the things that we've been looking at is ways to reduce the size of our organization and we're just doing things differently and better. And so we've been able to reduce staffing there and I think it's, although it's really just one position, but it's still 20% of what we had before, so I feel good about that. Some performance measurements, conduct a semi-annual review on all open claims with the four departments. It's something we do every year, look at departments that have the highest incidence of claims and we meet with them and talk to them and see if, just look for ways how we can reduce those claims or those exposures. Another measure is to complete 90% of the claims investigations within 45 days and that's for the liability program. And I think a really important goal is to maintain the number of workplace injuries at a level not to exceed a five-year average. Again, that's the goal of this program, is to avoid injury to begin with. And then another measure is to submit insurance renewals electronically and obtain policies electronically, just one of those green objectives. Okay. Lastly, non-departmental, and I'm going to, we're changing to general government or something, but other than non-departmental, I promise. It includes the community promotions program and then other programs such as debt service or activities, debt service capital, appropriator reserves and other. So looking at the community promotions, just go, you can see the list of funding we provide. The biggest is the one, the one in the second position, the Conference and Visitors Bureau and Film Commission. In 2010, we gave them one, almost $1.5 million. We lowered their, their contribution along with everybody else to $1.349 million in this year and then next year. And as we mentioned on Tuesday, we're not proposing any changes to those amounts for 2012 relative to the current year. We did make some cuts in 2011. You can see that Samana Nautica, Spirit of 76, those are promotions, community promotions that we are no longer funding. That was a decision we made this year as part of the adopted budget. Some things I wanted to point out, again, the Santa Barbara channels, we shifted them over in 2011. At the same time, we reduced them, they were at 340 or so, and we lowered them to 288. We're proposing the same funding next year. And then a new piece that we're actually providing to the Santa Barbara channels is for capital. And this relates to our franchise agreement with Cox Communications that is now a state franchise. It used to be a local, but now it's statewide or a state franchise. And we are entitled to charge up to 1% for what's called public education on government access. And we can charge up to 1%. And we, for our own benefit, for our own city TV program, we're charging .25, which is going to generate money for capital, can only be used for capital. And, but we're proposing also 1.5 or .15% that will be used to fund Santa Barbara channels' capital costs as well. It's going to provide them 30, almost $33,000 next year. So it just means we're going to have to add a little bit to the, to that franchise fee to cover that. The downtown visitor restroom program, it's a program we've had for many years where restaurants make available their restrooms for the public and we provide them $350 a month to do so. We used to have a lot more restaurants involved, but a lot of them have gotten out of business. We're down to two. And that's why you see in last year, we only spent $10,000. And I projected this year, I just looked at it yesterday, we're probably going to hit maybe the $10,000 mark again. We probably could lower this and we will, I'll work with Mr. Armstrong in lowering this for the, between now and the adopted budget to about $10,000 or $12,000 because it's a matter of just finding those folks. We're not actively looking for them. They usually come to us. And then lastly, the Santa Barbara Film and International Film Festival, you can see that no, no change in funding is proposed between this year and next year. And then the rest of it is new beginnings. This is half of what we fund. Downtown parking funds the other half. That's the overnight RV parking services, $43,000. The debt service, it's about the same from year to year. That's the debt service on the building on 630 Garden Street. Improvements we made a number of years ago, about 20 years ago. Our capital outlay this year, $508,000. Next year, $719,000. Does not include amount of money that's coming out of our capital outlay fund reserves. We talked about that, the $131,000 used to reserves to augment our capital program. You can see the appropriator reserves has gone down substantially because we no longer have that contingency we created in the current year budget. And then lastly, we have the League of California's city dues. That's the citywide dues we pay out of this program, $22,000 per year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
Thank you. And there's no public comment speakers on this item for finance or community? No? Okay. Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Mr. Smart, well, you just brought something up about the new beginnings program. As I recall, on the parking budget, I think that's the total number of the entire pass through. I don't, I don't believe that that's one half. I think that is what is funded, if I'm not mistaken.
And it's passed through, through the general fund. I think you're right.
Is it?
The general fund pays the downtown parking, which administers the program.
Yeah, that's, that's how I recall.
Okay. I stand corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. And my second question relates, we kind of skipped over real quickly. So I looked through the numbers on the solid waste department. And I was looking at the financial.
Ross, we're going to have a whole budget here on solid waste. The whole other day.
I should have said that the, I'm sorry. That's in May.
Yeah. Questions? Mr. White and then Ms. Self?
Madam Mayor. On the debt service on 630 Garden, how long more do we have on that?
Madam Mayor, Councilman White, I really don't know, but we're pretty close. We're at least 20 years into it, so maybe 10 or less years. Obviously, a small amount of debt service. That's the only debt the general fund actually has. We'll let you know.
Ms. Self?
Yes, right now, you receive trash bill and water sewer bill separate. Could those be combined for money savings? We receive two invoices. One is water and wastewater, and the other is a trash bill.
Yeah, mine comes in one nice thing.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Self, we'll have to look into that because we do.
I get two.
For somebody who has all three services within the city of Santa Barbara, they usually get the one bill on one statement, or three bills on one statement, so.
I'll bring them in.
Yeah, we'll look into that for sure. That sounds unusual.
Of course, that error happens to a council member, right? Other questions from? I want to bring up the community promotions, if we could. So part of this is a little, I always have to think, well, 4th of July is what I'm going to bring up. And just for us to remember, because the 4th of July is at the very beginning of a new fiscal year, the funding for it is in the previous fiscal year. So when the FY 11, this current fiscal year, as you'll see, there's no money in the Spirit of 76 parade, and that's actually for this coming 4th of July, even though it's in the next fiscal year. Got that? Okay. And I think Mr. Armstrong mentioned recently, looking at having the city, and he authorized having the city reimburse the Spirit of 76 parade for their insurance cost, the requirement in order to have the parade. So they're going to have the parade. And I would like to ask my colleagues to consider that we do that again for the 4th of July parade for 2012, which would mean we put that in this coming, in this budget here, maybe up to $5,000 or something like that, which would, so that was something I just thought, it's something we, the city has funded for many years for much more than $5,000. It was $12,000. I think it went down to 11, $450 in fiscal year 10. It fits the summer programs and, you know, bringing people downtown and so forth for the parade. So that's a request I want to throw out to my colleagues for their consideration. I do have a question about the July 4th Symphony concert. As I understand it, there is no, the, last year, I know the Santa Barbara Symphony did not have the concert because of other issues related to Santa Barbara Symphony, not to the city. So first question is, what happened to that money? Does that just go back into reserves, you know, to balance the budget? And then I guess the follow-up question is, I don't think, I think the Spirit of 76 group is actually putting on a concert. Are we suggesting that we're funding that concert with this money? Or is this different? Or if you could elaborate on that, that would be helpful.
Madam Mayor, so the $12,000 in the current year, because it will have gone unspent, it'll just fall to the general fund reserves.
Okay.
For next year, probably shouldn't have that money there with no, there was no intention to have that fund anything else or be used for any other purpose. So we, if it's not in fact going to occur, then we should remove that, those dollars, unless directed otherwise by council for other purposes.
So, so you're suggesting to take the money out because the symphony is not doing the concert?
Right.
Okay.
It was just an oversight on our part that it's there, I believe.
Okay. Well, then it might make it easier to refund the 4th of July parade with at least part of that money that's already budgeted in the concert. And actually, then you still have a surplus that we can, I'm sure there'll be something else that will cost $5,000 we'll want to fund somehow. But, and, and then the other piece to that, to go back to your downtown visitor restroom program, if we're only spending $10,000 a year or $11,000 a year, perhaps we should budget that, which then frees up another 10 for, I'm sure something, again, something else will come up. So those would be my suggestions on, on those items.
And our recommendation, I think, would be just make, on the July 4th Symphony, we'll make that a zero. On the downtown visitor restroom, we'll make it what we think it should be, move $5,000 to the 4th of July. And the rest would drop to, at this point, appropriated reserves, which would just increase it from $350 to whatever that amount would be.
Okay, however it works. But I think it's, I think it's appropriate for the city of Santa Barbara to help fund the 4th of July parade, so, from my opinion.
And if I could, if you want to vote or just get a consensus on that, then we'll make the changes and come back as a part of.
Do you want to make that as part of your revisions coming back when you adopt the budget?
That's what we would do.
Do you want to vote on that now?
Yeah, if, that way we get your consensus on that in terms of funding the, the 4th of July parade, and we'll make that change at $5,000. And then everything else, where in terms of the 4th of July, the symphony and also the downtown restrooms, we would just drop that to appropriated reserve. Then you can deal and you make your decisions.
So moved. Second?
Okay, any other discussion on that? Mr. Francisco? Oh, you were just ready to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
One last thing, 2017 is when the bonds expire.
Okay.
That completes our presentation. If, again, we were kind of looking for some kind of direction, if.
Anything else from the council about the finance department excluding solid waste that they would like, you would like staff to bring back? Any other questions or concerns? Mr. House?
Well, I want to get into solid waste, just want to ask, is, do you have any costs associated with it? The, I mean, are we, are you collecting the costs that might be associated with the pass through? Are there any costs, there's a, what, how many?
What topic are you talking?
This is, you've got a, you've got a very large amount of money that's passing through our system to Marborg and to Allied directly.
That's correct.
Are you collecting any piece of that to cover administrative costs of managing that pass through?
Yes, we are. Part of, part of the monies that we collect from our ratepayers through the solid waste program is to not only recover the cost that we owe the haulers, but also to cover the cost of our own programs. So that's built into the rate, if that's your question.
Okay. Anything else on the finance department? Nope, I think we're, we're set. Thank you. So we're moving on to administrative services.
Madam Mayor, council members, good afternoon. I'm Marcelo Lopez. I wear two hats. I'm the Assistant City Administrator, and today I'm wearing the hat of the Director of Administrative Services. With me are Barbara Barker, who is responsible for Human Resources. She'll be making the presentation as it pertains to Human Resources. You know Cindy Rodriguez, our city clerk. She'll be covering her portion, dealing with the city clerk's division. And lastly, is Tom Doolittle, who is the Director of Information Services Systems. So to give you an overview, I'm going to move swiftly through the presentation. We're following pretty much the same format as being presented by the finance department. So you can see this slide illustrates that point. First of all, and clearly this gives you an overview of the department, I mentioned who the division managers are. There are 25 and a half positions proposed in the FY 2012 budget. You'll note at the bottom that in contrast to 2009, where we had 31.5 positions. Moving rather quickly, the city clerk is responsible for maintaining the official city record, conducting the elections, ensuring the fair political practices compliance, and providing city advisory group support. Human resources, on the other hand, is responsible for the operation of a full-service human resources division. They handle classification studies, recruitments, salary surveys. They also handle the discipline, the discipline process, as well as the city's benefit program, which is a pretty complicated function for an organization like ours. They also handle the, administer the employee training program, which in 2012 is far less than what we've had historically. It really now concentrates on those mandatory type and essential training that an organization will need. And lastly, is the information systems division. They handle the infrastructure support for the entire computer system. They also are responsible for the financial and enterprise applications, and they're also responsible for the GIS program. In terms of looking at the entire department globally, and each division will cover their budget, we have approximately $4.3 million in the budget for 2012. You'll see that the bulk of the money, 55%, is allocated to information systems. That's not the general fund portion per se. You see the two other programs, which are human resources and the city clerk, those are general fund operations, and they'll talk about their budget as we move along. One important point is that you'll see that the budget of 4.2, 4.3 million includes $300,000 for the 2011 election. And that's something that you'll normally will see in the administrative services department, is that every other year, we have approximately $300,000 to conduct the election. Moving right along, I'll turn it over to Barbara and Cindy to cover the city clerk and human resources divisions.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I'm going to now focus on the general fund portion of the administrative services budget.
Is your mic on? It is? Okay.
A little closer.
There you go. Thank you. And the general fund portion of the budget is for the city clerk and human resources offices. The city clerk's office has $735,000 in their budget. $300,000 of this is for the upcoming November 11 election. And the human resources budget is $1.2 million for a total of $1.9 million. The majority of our budget, the $1.2 million, is in salaries and benefits. We have 15% of our budget, the $300,000 for the upcoming election, 11% for supplies and services at $216,000, allocated costs at $147,000. And we have $10,000 for our online job application system. This slide shows the, our budget over the course of the last four years from fiscal year 2009. And if you look kind of at the center line there, you can see in fiscal year 2009, we had $1.88 million. And for fiscal year 12, it's recommended at $1.64. During this timeframe, we've eliminated four positions, which is 25% of our staffing. And then you look down below that, you can see the elections. We've pulled those costs, you can see them more easily. And you can see how in 2009, it was $54,000, and they fluctuated up to $234,000. In 2011, back down to $20,000. And for 2012, it'll be $300,000. And that fluctuation is a result of whether the election was consolidated or the city had its own standalone election.
And the asterisk that you see there is simply because if you add the, the different budgets that you see in your budget, they won't add up to the same if you look at the line items. But if you look at the bottom line, it's the same. And again, it's because we called out in a global perspective, the election's cost for $300,000. But the bottom line remains the same.
This was a graphical representation of the slide we saw before, but you can easily see in the areas in the dotted lines, the fluctuation in the election monies from year to year. And we've lost, like I said before, we've eliminated four positions or 25% of our staff. In 2009, we had 16 employees, down to 14 in 2010. And for 2011 and 2012, we're down to 12 employees.
And again, this is combined for the city clerk and the human resources division.
And with. The White has a question.
What's the split between the city clerk and the human, and human resources in terms of FTEs?
FTEs, I have, HR has 8.5 and city clerk has 3.5.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Cindy Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I'll begin discussing revenues for the general fund. This slide represents revenues from 2009 through fiscal year 2012. The first line item represents a minimal amount, a minimal amount of fees and charges that the city clerk's office receives for issuance of domestic partnership certificates and copy charges. In fiscal year 2012, we anticipate receiving approximately $1,200 in fees and charges. The next line item is other revenue, and that line item represents fees that the clerk's office receives for appeals. We anticipate receiving approximately $2,200 in fiscal year 2012. The next item is overhead allocation, and that includes revenues for human resources in the city clerk's office. And that's budgeted at $742,000, with an overall total revenue for both the clerks and human resources at $745,000. General fund impacts of budget reductions. As Barbara mentioned previously, the elimination of four positions has affected, for both our divisions, customer service. We have experienced some delays that are related to assisting departments with research requests, related to positions and council actions. We've also experienced some delays in the recruitment process for the 30 advisory groups, and that is processing applications, applicant inquiries, and also updating the rosters. The clerk's office is also experiencing some delays in work with the council agenda reports. And with less staff to assist at the front counter and answering phones, there has been the front counter and answering phones, there has been some delay in processing council agenda reports and posting the packet to the website. In past years, the packet was posted on Thursdays on or before, or prior to 3:00 PM, and now we're closer to the end of the business day. We've also experienced some delays in the processing of Form 700s and campaign statements, and specifically delays related to follow-up and review of the forms. Key Objectives for the Clerk's Office and Human Resources. One key objective for the City Clerk's Office is conducting the city's 2011 municipal election to elect three council members and vote on ballot measures. Primary duties related to that process are working on a work plan, a line item budget, the nomination process, poll worker program, and election day logistics. Another key objective for the Clerk's Office is the coordination and recruitment process for the thirty advisory groups. As you know, we have a semi-annual recruitment that runs from April through June, and an annual recruitment from October through December each year. And oftentimes, we do find ourselves having to hold a special recruitment for unscheduled vacancies. Key Objectives for Human Resources. Conducting quarterly retirement workshops, which are offered to employees, and it's a combined effort with PERS and the Benefits Office staff. Another key objective for Human Resources is holding quarterly supervisor meetings or trainings, and those classes are comprised of discipline and agenda report writing classes. That concludes the general fund portion of our budget presentation. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Information Systems Manager, Tom Doolittle, who will be going over the Internal Service Fund portion of our presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I believe I am the first Internal Service Fund to present this year, so internal service funds are a slight bit different. A very brief description of what we provide. We have three programs. First program is infrastructure support, which provides desktop workstation support, software deployment, repair, and operation. We support a reliable network connection to more than forty facilities. We have city-owned fiber and leased communication circuits. We support more than fifty, excuse me, sixty servers, providing file and print services, applications, security and permissions, and databases, internet access, email, security, antivirus, and all the infrastructure support. Additionally, we would provide web services, departmental applications, and computer training for all departments. And second program is financial and enterprise applications, which is primarily the financial system. It's a twenty-year-old application designed, built, and supported by in-house staff, and as Mr. Samario stated, is recommended for replacement beginning in FY 12. We support a citywide maintenance management application that's used by four departments to handle schedule maintenance actions, and the CRIS reporting system, which is a web-based, ad hoc, very flexible reporting program. The third of our programs is centralized GIS, which was started in 2008. Prior to that, it had been decentralized. We've centralized it to provide consistent and standard data format. We have more than 170 GIS layers, street signs, curbs, trees, water, wastewater lines, the real, this has become one of the major infrastructure support and of value to the city. And we provide a maps program that allows internal staff to view these, as well as more restricted public maps. It doesn't have parcel ownership and other kinds of information, but provides quite a bit of very valuable information. Dealing with our portion of the budget, the Information Systems budget is 2.39 million, 2.339 million dollars. As with most programs, sixty-five percent of it is salaries and benefits. We have a fairly large services and supplies budget of about $382,000. Almost all of that is for hardware and software repair, maintenance, subscription of software licenses. We provide, we're budgeting about $273,000 for equipment. About half of that is for workstation replacements, and half is for network upgrades and infrastructure upgrades. We have allocated costs of $166,000, and we have appropriated reserves of one-half of one percent, about $11,000. The next couple graphs will show, but this in more detail, but 2009 was 2.48 million, 2012 recommended is 2.3, which is a net reduction over those four years of 5.8 percent.
Mr. White has a question for you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What's the allocated costs mean?
Those are the costs that we, as a department, enterprise funds and internal service funds are both charged those amounts. It covers city attorney's costs, finance costs.
Okay, that's the term used.
The overhead.
Thank you.
No, just to be clear, it's not overhead. It's for things like facility costs. So it's to pay the facility folks to maintain this building and for the energy. It's for vehicle cost, and, and also, although, desktop computers. So I don't know if you charge yourselves, but other, when you see it in other departments, that's how, how Tom gets his money, is those costs are allocated out for those 750, you know, desktop stations.
Okay. The next slide shows a little more in detail, so you can see year-to-year trends. Nothing, I mean, we're relative. We've had reductions, and we're relatively flat over the last two years. The next slide shows the graphical decrease from FY 2009 to 2012 in our appropriations, our expense appropriations, a 5.8 percent decrease. We've had position decreases as well. In FY 2009, we were at fifteen and a half FTEs, and FY 12, thirteen and a half, which is a reduction of 13 percent. This does not reflect the halftime FTE hourly position we had that we discontinued in FY 09 that helps us with web support, another very strong technology area that we've had a reduction in, but it was not reflected in our FTE positions. So 13 percent staff reduction over the last three years. On the revenue side, we receive our fees and, we receive a majority of our revenue through fees and charges, which are internal service funds. They're charges levied on departments via cost allocation. That has remained flat over the last two years, but a significant reduction of almost 6 percent over the four years. In FY 12, our revenues are 2.3 million, and our expenses from previous slides are 2.339 million, and so we're having to budget from our reserves about $33,000 to match expenses. The impact of budget reductions for Information Systems. We are, the bottom line is, we're meeting our requirements. We are providing required services, getting the job done. But we are struggling, as with every department. The 13 percent staff reductions was one supervisor position, which was eliminated in FY 10, which requires us, well, it doesn't require, but it resulted in reduced project planning, monitoring, technical support resources. Has moved us from a react, from a proactive position to more of a reactive position. We're not able to anticipate as well, and, which is causing some, some project impacts. In FY 11, we eliminated one PC network technician, which is at our help desk. We went from three staff to two. The help desk is the first level support for all departments. It's resulted in slower responses to questions from staff on how to do something, tricks and tips. It's also resulted in longer repair times when there's been computer problems. We've also reduced our computer training classes. We had to reallocate time of our computer training coordinator, which has made her available about 40 percent less time for training classes and for project work. On the other side of it, the, the expense reductions of almost 6 percent, workstations are retained longer and require more repair. Up till last year, we had quite a few workstations. About 30 percent of our workstations were six years old, up to six years old. We jump-started that replacement because of the high problems with repair and performance, and, and replaced all those. We no longer have workstations older than four years old, but they're still old, and the industry standard is three to four years. So we're, we've made a significant progress there, but we are experiencing more repair requirements and more action required. We've had to defer purchase of software upgrades. Most of our, most of the software has an annual maintenance fee that allows you to get the next version. And if you don't pay that, then you have, you don't, you're stuck with the version you have, and if you want to upgrade, you have to buy that license again. This has hit us, or going to hit us hard with Office. We are, we had to give up the Microsoft Office agreement, and so we no longer own anything but Office 2007, which is the new version we're going to. When and if we upgrade to Office 2010, as a number of people have at home, we'll have to buy that new, and that has a price tag of about $350,000. We've also eliminated all staff travel and training. There's certainly webinar trainings available, and they're very effective, but we're not really able to leverage the new technology, and we also want to improve our database monitoring, our network monitoring, and those portions of the proactive part of the network that I was talking about. The key objectives for Information Systems for FY 12. We're going to complete the upgrade to Office 2007. That starts next week, and we will be done in October. There are more than 15 different classes that are going to be made available to staff for city emphasis to make this as smooth as possible. The old version that we're replacing, Office 2003, is more than eight years old. It's two versions out. It's not being supported. We're also going to upgrade workstations to Windows 7 this year. The existing operating system, XP, is two versions out. It's also eight years old. It's not long, it's no longer being supported. We're completing server virtualization. You know, you can get into geek talk here real quick, but it is reduced, it reduces our hardware and software costs, uses far less energy in both cooling and power, improves server reliability by consolidating servers into pools that have redundancy and allow us to provide better service. As Mr. Samario mentioned, we're going to launch the financial management replacement. That's a 20-year-old application. It will be approximately a four-year project, major project, and we're very excited about getting that started. We're going to create a data imaging policy and storage capability. Very quickly on this, we have an ever-increasing amount of images, photos, from fire department forensic photos, to risk management photos of cracked sidewalks and slips and falls, and to water and wastewater video clips of pipeline inspections. These take up huge amounts of storage. They're very static. They don't change. And right now, we're storing them in a classic file server manner. We're going to create a low-cost storage capability that allows them to be stored, not backed up, and relieve that higher cost of storage. We're going to be upgrading the GIS and map software. That's two years old, and the new features will significantly improve its capabilities. And we're going to upgrade the city website with new technology features. That, this current city website is based on a nine-year-old technology. It'll have, the new website will have new efficiencies and new features. That concludes my portion. Turn it over to Mr. Lopez for summary.
Before I, before I get to my, yes, Madam Mayor.
There are a couple of questions, I see, Mr. House and Mr. Hotchkiss before.
Yeah, it's about this.
It was, yeah, it, I mean, I could, I could hear it in your voice that you're about as small as you can get, and you're concerned that you're not able to deliver the services that really are needed with what you have. And I, I mean, not, that doesn't mean to, you know, I don't mean to demean what you're doing, because it's phenomenal what you're doing, and you've got a great burden. Do you, do you know in your forward planning what the threshold is, or the place where you would, you would ask for one of those positions back, or another position back? I mean, if you, do you have it in your, in your, in your planning, the particular benchmark, or the exact threshold, or those, what's, what it is that you would, at what point would you pull, pull back to needing the additional staff?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember House, I will be asking for a position back as soon as I feel that revenues and the city can support that. But we're, as well as all other departments, assisting in, in
Yes, of course.
...reduction. We definitely have the need for that. We are not broken. We're not in crisis mode, but it will provide operational benefits and efficiency benefits to the department with additional staff.
Well, Madam Mayor, I, okay, there's, there's two ways I'm asking that, and now for Mr. Lopez. One of them is, yes, for returning to the level of service that we had been experiencing before, now probably even with some better efficiencies, given that everybody's been really pushed. But also, when you mentioned the word crisis, I mean, the organizations, the demands in the organization don't really go down, even though our staffing has gone down. And so I'm just interested to know your management approach, and knowing, like, if you were in a position of crisis, that you've already established what that might be, and at what point you would be asking for some additional appropriations of some sort.
Madam Mayor, if I may, Councilmember House, I, I think if you look at the entire department, I think we're at the point where we're, we cut about as much as we can, but it's a status quo budget that we're presenting at this point. We are getting the job, job done. I don't think we're in a crisis mode that we're ready to say, hey, we need additional positions right now. Some of the issues that Mr. Doolittle presented, you know, we are now not as aggressive as we can in learning more about the, the changes in the systems and becoming more proficient and more effective. I think that's where the greatest sacrifice is right now. We are getting the job done, and, but we're not at the point where we're saying, you know, we're really drowning. It's a status quo budget, and if we get to that point, we'll, we'll come back to the city administrator and make that request.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is in the sort of the opposite direction of what Mr. House was talking about. As I understand, you've got 750 stations right now, and those have to be virtually serviced individually. For instance, if somebody's going to go on, on the internet, you know, ActiveX or QuickTime or any of those things, require new upgrades, downloading, et cetera. But I think right now, the, you can't do that unless you have certain administrative privileges. Am I correct?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hotchkiss, we have a software deployment methodology that automatically patches a whole lot, almost all of the software. QuickTime, Flash, Adobe, and some of those operate just a slight bit differently than that. And we are researching a new product that will automatically cover that to where we don't have to have each individual workstation owner individually download the newest Flash player or QuickTime player, that we will be able to deploy that citywide. We're doing that now for probably 95 percent of the applications. The ones you mentioned are unique right now.
Okay.
And we will have that address.
I guess what I was sort of asking is, if we change the administrative privileges slightly, could people just do that on their own? In other words, do something your job for you?
Yes, they can. It has an inherent risk factor of if we provide each individual user full administrative rights, then they could download anything they wanted, and then the workstations would become inconsistent and non-standard. We're attempting to provide not the least common denominator, but the most stable platform for people to work on.
Thank you.
Ms. Self?
Thank you. I am anything but computer literate, but I'm hearing a lot of advertisements for Carbonite.com, which is an off-site backup. And as my simple brain is processing it, the, the pictures and the information that is very data-heavy. If that could be put on, say, one computer that is backed up off-site and have the files to retrieve it as needed, they have both a personal and a professional cost for that, but that, has anybody looked into that?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Self, I am not familiar with Carbonite specifically, but the concept that you talked about is clearly one of the leading technologies. It also has the other name of cloud computing. You store things away from us
Right.
...where there are a lot less cost. And yes, that's clearly one of the options. It does have a risk. If that cloud computing company goes under or has problems and they lose their data, then you've lost the data as well, because you're relying entirely on them to store that for you. So we're, we have to weigh those and then figure out a stable backup.
Maybe looking into their reliability, you know, what kind of track record and stuff. Maybe looking into their reliability, you know, what kind of track record and stuff, just a suggestion.
Absolutely. That is the new technology, the new buzzword, and we're looking at it and want to make sure we do due diligence before we offload very important drawings and, you know, sewer inspections, and then say, oh, we've lost it.
It crashed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
Before I get to my last two slides, just in summary, you know, we're really looking at a status quo operation compared to last year. It is getting a little bit harder for us to do some of the work, but we're getting the work done. We are being more reactive and less proactive, and we would like to be more proactive than we are today, but the job is getting done. Barbara is going to be faced, will continue to be faced, with the challenges of working with a changing organization, and that has a significant impact on human resources. They have to do a lot of the work to be able to accomplish those changes. Tom Doolittle, his two biggest ticket items are going to be the upgrade of the infrastructure, which staff has been working on for quite some time, and we are on track to make those improvements to be more effective and efficient as an organization. And then the launching of the financial management system, that's another big ticket item. For Cindy is the election. The election this coming year is a big ticket item for us, and, you know, it's going to be the third time we do it. And we've enjoyed the last two, and we hope to enjoy the next one. And it is on this point that I really wanted to bridge to another area of potential for budget savings, as we talk to the council, and we give you ideas as to where is there a possibility to make some savings. And well, that's taking a look at the issue of the standalone odd-year election versus the consolidated even-year election. If you recall, we got into the election business, because the county's estimates, cost estimates in 2007, were somewhere in the neighborhood of $550,000 to $650,000. I would suspect that if they were to do a standalone election today, it probably would be at that number, if not significantly higher. So with that in mind, we went ahead and proposed to the council that we would do the election, and we came in with a $300,000 budget in 2007, and we spent less than that. And we did the same thing in 2009, and we spent less than that. But there is, it costs $300,000 if the city continues to run its own election. A consolidated even-year election, if it were to be done by the county, and we call it one contest or two contests, one contest is for the council members, and two contests is for the mayor and council. You're talking about the county in an even-year charging us somewhere between $50,000 to $60,000, or $75,000 to $90,000 respectively, which means that you're talking at a cost, if we continue to do our own election at $300,000, if we are able to shift to an even-year election, is between $50,000 and $90,000, with a potential savings in excess of $200,000. Of course, that's a policy decision to be made by the council, should you have an interest or wish to move in that direction, but that, for us, is one of the points that I thought it would be important for us to point out.
Right. Not only is it a policy issue by the council, it's a vote of the people, it's a charter amendment, so we'd have to move that forward. But we don't know yet if the state is going to hold a special election, that's still kind of out there in terms of—no, I think the June idea is about dead, but if—I've heard, read newspaper articles or whatever, that Governor Brown still might look to do some sort of special election later this year. So if the governor and the state did call a special election for November 8th, which is the first Tuesday in November, which is when we would have our election, I'm assuming we would have that policy decision to then consolidate with the county, so you're not having people have two different ballots and all of that. Is that—I mean, when would we know about that?
Madam Mayor, the one we would know, I really don't know when we would know what the state's going to do.
I guess there are deadlines, just like we have deadlines, they have deadlines.
But at this point, one of the things that we are contemplating is working with the city attorney's office, so that when we come to council with our recommendations, we make provisions exactly for that, in the event that the state calls for a special election, that we might be able to shift from one to the other. And as I understand that, Cindy, we're talking about 88 days prior to the election, and that's really the final point for us to be able to make the decision. Of course, we would not want to recommend to council a situation where we're recommending a vote-by-mail election, and running with a vote-by-mail election, and the county is recommending a poll, or conducting a poll election, because they cannot conduct a vote-by-mail election, and you have two elections going. So our goal would be to consolidate with the county if we can.
But, okay, so we'll wait and see what the state—
It's really a wait-and-see right now, and it would be up to 88 days prior to the election.
Okay. Mr. House?
I'm just, I just want to bottom-line it, it's not on the slide, and you did say it at the very beginning, but because we're doing it ourselves, we are saving between $200,000 and $300,000 each of these elections, from what it would have cost with the county.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, between $300,000 to $350,000—
I'm sorry, $350,000.
—based on the 2007 estimates, that's correct.
It's the savings?
Yes.
Okay. And with the—
Yeah, $250,000 to $300,000.
$250,000, okay, let's get that right. Any case, still, a considerable amount is being saved, because we're doing it this way. And it's the vote of the people that has us doing it this way. They chose very clearly that they would like us to continue, unless this goes to them again, and they change their mind.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other, are you, have you—yeah, Mr. Hotchkiss?
88 days, basically, the 1st of August, right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, that would be August 12th. The governor does have the power to call it after the 88th day. There is a provision in the code that allows municipalities, should he call it after the 88th day, 44 or five-day window, I'm not quite sure, the number of days, the exact number, but that does allow us, as a municipality, excuse me, to call a special election and to come before you and request that we conduct a consolidated election. There is a provision in that that covers that section.
So how would we, if we were doing an all-mail-in-election, how do we adapt? I'm not sure I understand.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, what we would do at that time is, we would have already ordered some supplies, but no more than $10,000, the supplies that we would be able to use at a subsequent election at a later date. We would, at that time, have to consolidate with county elections and put the request in, and it would be a traditional poll election, using their poll workers, and we would save considerable amount of money. I believe in the 2005 election, we took advantage of a statewide consolidated election, and our bottom-line cost was $90,000 at that time, so it's a huge savings.
So this would be 45 days before Election Day itself, which is November 1st, or 2nd, or 9th?
November 8th this year.
8th this year, okay. All right, so that's just about the time we'd be sending out our ballots, right by mail?
Our ballots will go out the first week in October.
Right, so we're really going to be right down to the line.
And, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, as our director had mentioned earlier, we are very proactive on this. We have a work plan that's in place. In addition, we've already been communicating with the county, they are aware that we, there is a possibility that we may, you know, consolidate, should the governor call the election. We have different plans going on simultaneously, so that we're covering those. We know exactly how much money will be, you know, what supplies we have ordered thus far, and it would be very, very little transition to transition over to the county.
Right, but Sacramento's calling the tune here, totally.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Lopez?
That concludes my presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or other items the council would like to bring up on administrative services? I have one, just the last couple of years, because of budget cutbacks, and it was in this department to make the determination to significantly cut back on employee trainings. And I see that that's status quo for this coming year, which is fine. I would like to know what the impact of not having those trainings has been in the last couple of years, and I don't know if HR, for example, has received an increased number of calls from supervisors about how do I take care of such-and-so's situation, or, you know, recruitment retention tools, something like that. Because I think as we move into the next year, it'll be three years, I think, of some significant reductions in employee trainings, and it'd be good to monitor what the impact of that's been, so. Ms. Parker, unless you have anything right now you can add?
Well, just that we do get requests for training, and if we see a pattern, we try to, you know, give a special training, like customer service, or maybe disciplinary training, how the system works. I know I've talked to Cindy about maybe doing some council agenda report preparation training, so we're just trying to deal with requests that we get, on a case-by-case basis at this point.
Okay. Well, just maybe as we move forward, just sort of keep that in mind, because eventually we hopefully can restore some of it, but we want to restore the ones that are most effective, so. Anything else from the council? Okay, you want to just keep on going, you have one more depart, two more departments, city attorney's office?
Thank you. Yeah.
Mr. Wiley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It strikes me that there is a certain logic for the city attorney's office to follow HR and IS, and even the city clerk's office. We're all sort of client-service departments, you know, we don't design and get bridges rebuilt, or run an airport or a harbor. We're departments that advise other city departments, and we're fairly small. And so, there, and I'll get into this, I think, in more detail, in a down economy, certain things don't necessarily slow down. People don't necessarily not sue the city because times are slow. In fact, it's more likely that we'll see lawsuits against the city when times are slow. And, for example, I've noticed in particular, code enforcement, our code enforcement actions or referrals are up considerably from the good times, and I think that is related to the economy. City Attorney's Department, this is the chart that shows you what I'm going to talk about, but I think I will just mention here that there's, it shows five bullets, five slides, there's actually six, because I decided to add a mission statement rather than talk about performance goals, because I thought that was a bit more appropriate. But our office organizational chart, a few points I want to make here. Number one, this is a great group of people. We didn't have the liberty to add all of our names. You'll see that we've got 11.4 employees in our department, and I would wish I could put all the names up there, because it's a great group of people. And I guess the term may be a great group of true believers. We really try to be a professional attorney's office. We really do believe that city departments, city staff, and city council are our clients, and we're trying to impress our clients, just as if we were a private law firm, and we wanted that business to continue, we wanted that relationship to continue. We always are interested in impressing our clients, but we've got some great people, and, you know, some of the names that aren't up here that you may know. Julie Ruggeri is a true believer when it comes to defending the city in lawsuits, and Laura Borden is, you may not know, is our legal secretary who handles all of the code enforcement case, and Laura is a true believer and an extremely well-organized individual. So it's just a great group of people. The other point I want to make, this is actually represents seven attorneys. We recently made Tava Ostringer a deputy city attorney. She acted as our law clerk for about two years, and Tava has taken over certain aspects, certain significant aspects of public work, public works, such as advising the engineering department, just general legal advice to public works. And I think, as you know, that can come in the form of bid protests for big projects, but it's a large, public works is a large department, and they do tend to need a lot of general legal advice. And Tava is interested, very interested, in learning public works law and advising them. She continues to supervise code enforcement. We have a new law clerk, his name is Reed Gallagie, Stanford University graduate, a recent December 2010 graduate of Santa Clara University Law School. And so he's a new attorney, and he's very enthusiastic, and we feel pretty good about him handling our code enforcement and our chronic offender program. And, you know, it's, in a way, I feel unusual about employing a licensed attorney in a law clerk position, but you know, and I read an article about this in the LA Times just recently, a lot of public law firms are employing or have interns, licensed attorneys as interns, and they can't afford to pay them. But these offices are thrilled to have licensed attorneys volunteering full-time, in a lot of cases, most cases. And the attorneys themselves are thrilled to have a position to learn to be an attorney, even if they aren't getting paid. Now Reed's getting paid, but unfortunately, he's only half-time right now, because that's what all our budget can afford. But this is our group of people. The other thing I want to mention, and I know I hear this from the council over the years, is cross-training, and that is such a critical thing. Santa Barbara is such a full-service city, there are so many different areas of the law that our attorneys need to know, can know, and, in fact, are very interested in knowing. You know, we're, for example, Santa Barbara's a major landlord, the city of Santa Barbara, whether it's the airport or the harbor, even Parson Rec has a few leases, and we're talking serious money in serious leases. And that is really, by and large, a, just a commercial landlord, legal advice business, and it's really, I don't think there's any distinction between public and private aspects of commercial leases. And right now, for the last few years, Sarah Connect has been doing most of that, because she advises the waterfront and the airport. She's also the redevelopment attorney, and there's a nice connection there. But other attorneys are interested in learning that area of the law. Tom Shapiro, of course, does all of the tort defense of the city. He's in court, you know, day in, day out, jury trials, court trials, law and motion. That's a real specialty in the law, but almost all the attorneys in our office have had some exposure to litigation, not always tort litigation, it might be a sequel lawsuit, or a Public Records Act lawsuit, or just a general challenge with city ordinance, but, for example, Sarah Connect recently handled some challenges involving the Brown Act, and a recent motion filed in connection with a challenge to the, how the city regulates RV parking on the street, and successfully handled that. And she did that because she wants to learn litigation. So I'm a firm believer in everyone kind of moving around a little bit. We've done some recent changes, as I mentioned, as a result of Tava becoming a deputy city attorney, and our new law clerk, and I think the departments are pleased with that. Which brings me to our next slide, we're, of course, a general fund department, and, as I said, with 11.4 positions. I should mention, we actually have a few people in there every now and then. We have an attorney that comes in and is paid on an hourly basis out of that liability fund that was up there earlier, and that's really not in our budget, but this is a research attorney that does research on litigation, and I've mentioned this in past years, that's a very smart move in our product. We've been doing it for years, but it's just great to have a research attorney preparing motions for you in litigation, it really pays off. But again, we're a general fund department, and it's people, it's salaries and benefits, and then when we get into the actual numbers, you'll see that it's status quo, which, of course, status quo now means the cuts that will need to be made to make the balanced budget will be made. If that's furlough, that's what it is, and of course, it's more than likely no vacation cash out, that's what we mean by a status quo budget. And as I say, when we get to the numbers, I think you'll see that the only increase can be explained by the cost of our PERS contribution increasing. We pay rent, and that's, when I get to the actual chart with the numbers, you'll see that that's, well, the actual supplies and services category is roughly $250,000, and about $175,000 of that is the rent that we pay, rent and CAM charges in our office. And we are working on reducing that, we've got only just a little over a year left on our lease, and we've been in discussions, we have sort of retained, if you will, a commercial broker to represent us with our landlord, and he's been gathering data about comparable lease space available, particularly comparable rent numbers, and we've opened negotiations with our landlord. Not to say that we're necessarily going to stay in the same place, but we really want to know what our choices are, and we want to know that the market, that we're paying market rent. But that's, the rent really is a significant portion of our supplies and services budget. And of course, I think, you know, the allocated cost, our phones, and our use of the fleet cars, and things like that, computers. So the next slide. We're down, I think the best thing to say here is that we're down from a budget of $2,230,000 to a recommended budget next year of $1,930,000. Again, the difference is, the increase there, if you will, in the salary and benefit line is the PERS, increased PERS contribution. line is the PERS, increased PERS contribution. Next slide. This is just a graphic showing the trend of our budget. Last year, we, we did have to do a layoff and, and we sort of had to overcut because of that, or it resulted in that. And we're back up slightly this year, just, just slightly. But in fact, since 2009, our staffing is down 12.3%. And my note to myself at this point is brush fires. And by that, I mean, a week hardly ever goes by that we don't have one or two major legal brush fires, some big problem that's come up. And the phones are ringing in our office and somebody's getting called out to an immediate meeting or some, some issue like that. And it's tough when your, when your staffing's been reduced 12.3%. I think we're making do and I think we're making do fine. And it's, it is no question that this has been necessary for all of us. But I, I will tell you, I tell my staff, do the best you can and don't let it get to you. It's, it's, you know, there's some real demands on us because as, as I say, people are still suing us. We're still doing plenty as a city. We're still, as, as we'll get into, we've still, when you look at, look at the big picture, as mentioned the other day, it's a quarter of a million dollar, quarter of a billion dollar operation around here when you add up everything, enterprise funds and capital projects. And all of those things need legal advice. But I will tell you, one of the things on the brush fires that I, we've done, and I encourage my people to do, is to, to be firm. When someone calls with a major brush fire, say, you know, can you give me a good written analysis of what the problem is? Can you sort of ask the client, if you will, to really think through the problem, explain it well? And particularly if they can do that in writing in an email. It just helps, I think, focus everyone, their supervisors and the city attorney's office on the real issues rather than saying, here's a big problem, can, could you handle it? This, we, we do generate some revenues in our department. Primarily, it's because, of course, it's appropriate for us to track our hours advising the redevelopment agency as a separate legal entity of the city and separate, totally separate funding source. I know as long as I've been here, we've tracked our hours, attorney hours for advising the redevelopment agency and we're reimbursed for those. We've had some minor or miscellaneous, minor miscellaneous revenues over the years. I'm told that this relates mostly to getting reimbursed for a copying cost for public records requests. We deal with a lot of, all of us deal with a lot of public records requests. But generally, when those requests come from a law firm or an attorney, we ask that it be referred to the city attorney's office because we want to know exactly what they're asking for because it gives us a good sense of why they're asking. And we do recoup some of that cost. And it's kind of interesting, this is called code enforcement fines. It's actually civil penalties. We didn't, I guess the, the field doesn't allow that to be put in there. It's not large enough. But in this past year, we collected around $70,000 in civil penalties for the city. Now, these are not fines for infractions or these are not administrative penalties necessarily. These are actually, by and large, code enforcement cases in Superior Court where we've gotten the judge to order the violator to pay the city civil penalties. And mostly that happens after we've got them held in contempt of court for failing to abate the, the, in, the violation in a timely fashion. So I don't know that we can count on always receiving, you know, $70,000 a year in civil penalties. But I will tell you, we're really, we are focusing on that and we are recognizing that judges are willing to impose that and we're asking for it.
Miss South, that's a question.
Thank you. Does any of that have recouping of attorney's fees for?
There really, under the law, there's really virtually no way to do that. I, I really follow that. I've always been interested in trying to recoup attorney's fees. But it's just a, a fact of law in this country, but especially California, that they don't award public attorneys, public agency, their attorney's fees. And, and plenty have tried. There just isn't any, there's, there's only one statute. It's called the Private Attorney General Statute. And it's, you have to have, go on a lawsuit in such a way that confers a general public benefit. And it's worded in such a way that it's, it, it works well for environmental law firms and nonprofit law firms, but it just doesn't, the courts don't really apply it to public attorneys.
So that might be the civil penalties, trying to give you back something for your efforts?
Yeah. We actually have gotten our attorney's fees in a few small cases and having to do with a civil code provision where somebody files a clearly frivolous lawsuit and you warn them that it's frivolous and you can prove it and they don't dismiss it. And we've had, we've been sued for accidents outside of the city and we said, this is frivolous. We know where this is. It's not in the city. You should not be suing us. And they still persisted and we got attorney's fees when they persisted. And we warned them. You have to warn them before you can get it. But the judge, the judge totally agreed with us that it was frivolous for them to keep pursuing the city on a lawsuit up on Gibraltar Road, so.
And I want to thank you not only for your answer now, but for constantly in being our teacher about such things that you're involved with. It's been a great deal of help. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think that's kind of my nature to want to explain my profession at times. I, I mentioned this, I mentioned this last year, I think it was Jim or maybe it was Bob Simmario mentioned the other day that we're a quarter of a billion dollar operation. This, this chart isn't quite right because it doesn't show the capital projects, but it does show what should be called the internal service funds. I don't, I don't know that internal service fund generate the need for legal advice much. I mean, certainly IS, we, we give them legal advice, but, you know, some of the internal service funds are just kind of replacement reserves. But capital projects certainly generate a need for legal advice. They, they have legal problems and, you know, the, the enterprise funds, the airport, the harbor. So we're the general counsel's office for a quarter of a billion dollar operation. And when you look at it like that, we represent 0.671% of the, that quarter of a billion dollar operation. And I'm kind of proud of that because, for example, we don't contract out very much with outside law firms, hardly at all. And I know one of the biggest issues right now in the municipal law business, especially for cities our size and say up to 200,000, is whether they should have in-house city attorneys. And then when they do, how much does that city attorney's office contract out? And I will tell you, there are cities that have millions of dollars contracting out in legal expenses. For example, I mean, not to be specific, but a lot of cities have a deductible, a liability deductible of a quarter of a billion dollars. And of course, that deductible is per case. So every time they get sued, maybe a suit alleging things against the police department because we get a lot, all cities get a lot of those, or a suit involving a trip and fall or an accident at intersection, those cities with a quarter of a million dollar deductible, that have, they've got to go out and hire an attorney because they typically don't have in-house attorneys to handle that. And they're paying up to a quarter of a million dollars each case, handle it whether they win or not. It's, it's generally their expense. So it can be expensive to, to be, to defend itself, for a city to defend itself. And we're just proud of the fact that we by and large do that with 11.4 individuals 100% of the time. And that represents only 0.671% of that, the overall city enterprise. The final slide. This is sort of our performance goals. Because we're, I don't think our office necessarily reduces itself well to quantitative goals, maybe code enforcement, but that's the one exception. But it just, in conclusion, I want to say that, and I won't go into too much detail, but I'm a big believer in this, that we give clear, frank, understandable, objective, and common sense legal advice to the city and to the city council. And I really prefer to do that in writing because that makes it clear and understandable. That preserves it and allows it to be used again a year or two or even 10 years later if the law hasn't changed. And, you know, one of the things I, I evaluate my attorneys on in, in our office is their ability to do that, their willingness to do that. And that's related very much to this overall goal of preventing lawsuits and preventing legal disputes. Preventative lawyering is the best kind of lawyering there is. And then let me jump to that, that fourth bullet. If we draft well-written, understandable, and enforceable ordinances in contracts, we're doing our jobs right. And I am really picky about well-written ordinances and contracts. And that's preventative lawyering. When, when there's a contract dispute, it's about the fact that someone failed to foresee that something was ambiguous and they're arguing over it. So, you know, I, the city charter says we have to approve all ordinances and contracts as to form. And, and I think we really take that seriously as well we should. We also, you know, we're now, particularly lately, we're prosecutors, whether it's code enforcement. We've always been very strict about code enforcement in Santa Barbara. And I, it, it goes hand in hand with the, the nature of the community of Santa Barbara that we, we like it to look good and to, we like people to follow the law. And so we're pretty strict about code enforcement. But I also think we want, we try to be fair and objective. And it's, it's not untypical for us to be accused of being not objective. But I, I can tell you, I really think we are objective. We're just looking for compliance. And finally, to be a city team player. And, and I guess the, one, you know, it's just important to be a team player. And it's, we're fortunate, Jim Armstrong and, and the city administrators before him consider us to be part of a team. Because I know that's not always the case in every city. Sometimes the city attorney's office is out there, consulted only when necessary and only reluctantly and not invited to meetings. And that's not the case here and we feel it's a compliment to us and we, we really do want to be a team player. But we do want to recognize that we're just the lawyers. I'm always telling my people, try and keep your mouth shut unless it's a, a legal issue. But at times, sometimes it's, there's a mix. And, and when we speak up, I, I want at least the lawyers in the office to recognize that they should keep their personal views out of it. Try to be objective and give the legal advice, yet be a team player if you're asked to be a team player. So that's all I have. I'd love to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss has a question.
Not really a question, just a statement. I want to say that when I, when I got this job, one of the first things that Dale told me was to call Steve if you got a question. So I did that, I think probably the second call I made. And I wanted to thank you and tell you how responsive your office is. Really, right, right from the get-go and all the way down to the present. And it's a real honor to work with you and I really appreciate, often the call, callback comes from the top guy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's part of just this being such a great community that we all, I think, especially the council members, we're just, that's why we're here.
Great. No questions, that's probably a good thing. So, but thank you very much for your service and, and for your presentation. We have one more. Do you want to just barrel on through? Okay. So Mr. Armstrong, city administrator and mayor and council's office.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're going to now present to you the city administrator's office budget and also the mayor and council's budget. And Nina Johnson is going to make the presentation, but I'll chime in where appropriate.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Nina Johnson, Assistant to the City Administrator. And I'm going to be presenting the proposed budget for the mayor and council's office and the city administrator's office this afternoon. Before I go further, I did want to thank Linda Gunther in our office for all the work that she's done on, to help with our budget, all of our staff, city TV supervisor, Tony Ruggeri, and also Kristi Schmidt, our employee relations manager. To prepare the proposed budget, before I start going through the details, I did want to say that we reviewed all of our expenses and revenues in detail. And really what you'll see is that we've continued to limit a lot of spending only to the essential supplies and services to maintain the current services we have to employees and the public. As an overview, I plan to cover our programs and services for each of our programs, our proposed revenues and expenditures, and then our work plan. Over the years, you've seen three programs typically in the city administrator's office, the administration program and the city television program. And we had a third program, the employee relations program, which is essentially Kristi Schmidt and the labor negotiation function. We have now combined that with the administration program as part of the full city administrator's office. So those revenue, those expenditures, revenues, that entire budget has been combined in the budget. I wanted to run through some of the key activities in these programs. In the city administrator's office, we manage operations for 10 city departments with approximately 1,000 full-time employees. We coordinate several citywide programs, sustainability, youth gang issues, our legislative program. Many of these involve council committees or other community committees. We coordinate internal and external communication efforts. So this involves the city administrator's report that we issue, water bill inserts, media releases, and other communication efforts, the state of the city. We also oversee review of the weekly council agendas. So our office reviews every report from all departments each week as part of the council In our employee relations efforts, we negotiate and administer labor contracts with seven employee bargaining units. We also work with employees in those bargaining units on various employee issues, complaints and grievances, also designing workplace policies for the organization. In city TV, they televise meetings with the city council and 13 boards and commissions, also televising meetings for the city of Galita, MTD, and very soon, Santa Barbara City College at the end of this month. The city TV operation also produces several special programs inside Santa Barbara and the Garden Wise Guys, that's a water conservation, conservation show, and other special programs. Also, if you tune into Channel 18, you'll see an electronic calendar of job announcements and events. They maintain that information. Overall, between both programs, we have 9.9 regular employees, 7.9 in the city administrator's office, and two full-time employees in city TV. And in, in addition, in city TV, we've got three hourly employees. We also have a few interns from local schools that are unpaid, that assist. If you look at where the, the money comes from, our revenue in the city administrator's office, almost half of that revenue is coming from the general fund. 37% is coming from our overhead allocation. This is charged out to departments. And then our 7% is coming from the inter-fund reimbursement. And I'm going to come back to that in a moment for a breakdown, but that's primarily for the, a citywide coordination of sustainability efforts. I'll, I'll return to that in a moment. And then service charges, 173,000, that's 9% of our total budget. We're an administrative office, but we do have the city TV operation that charges revenue for some services. If we look at that in more detail, we'll see about 90,000 of those service charges are coming from taping and programming services for enterprise and general fund programs. So that's taping the harbor commission meetings, airport commission, MTD, a number of board and commission meetings, also programming for, I mentioned, Garden Wise Guys, the water funds and regional water agencies pay for those services. We also receive 59,000 in revenue for what's called a peg fee, public educational and government access fee. We used to receive an equipment grant from Cox for several years, but that agreement ended in December. Now, as part of the state franchise agreement that went to council a few months ago, we now charge a peg fee of a quarter percent. So that, that amount translates to 59,000 a year. And that is, that money can only be used for equipment. That's important to note. For several years, we've also had a contract with the city of Galita. We provide their meeting coverage services for almost $24,000. There aren't too many key revenue changes, but the, the most significant ones, we have money budgeted. We've been doing work for the airline terminal, doing construction updates, videos on those updates this year. And we'll see new revenue next year because they are putting together a history of the airport video that's going to be airing in the, on display in the new terminal. terminal. Also, we have one item that's not included in the budget because it is very new, it was an agreement that just came together, and that's for $6,500 in revenue to cover the monthly meetings at Santa Barbara City College. If you look at the inter-fund transfers, I mentioned this is mostly sustainability. Overall, for several years, including this year, we have charged enterprise funds $141,000 to coordinate the sustainability program, and we're reducing that cost in the next year to $97,000. That's, we're reducing it by a third. We looked at our staffing, our previous costs were for a full analyst and for program expenses, and we decided that it was really a quarter of the analyst's time and a quarter of my time, plus the program expenses, so we came to $97,000 to charge, to distribute for the bulleted groups here, water fund, wastewater fund, solid waste fund, and then the facilities and motor pool groups. And those are the, where the prime, where most of the environmental program work is being handled. Also, we are going to be bringing Kristi Schmidt back from Environmental Services this year. She has been working there as the Acting Environmental Services Manager. In this next year, she'll be working in the City Administrator's Office, but one of her primary projects, one of her large projects will be negotiating the contract for the trash hauler for Zone One. So 20%, we've estimated, 20% of her time will be needed for that project, to lead that, and we will be charging the solid waste fund $34,000 each year. If we look at where the money goes, it's no surprise that most of the budget is spent on salaries and benefits. It's an administrative operation. 10% on supplies and services, 6% on allocated costs, and that really pays for the costs of custodial services, information systems, facilities, maintenance, and so forth. Equipment, we have a small equipment budget, that's the $59,000 from the PEG fee for City TV, and then 1% of our budget goes for special projects, and that's for sustainability expenses. If you look at our budget over a period of a few years, you'll see that our proposed budget for the upcoming year is really a decrease, a decrease of 12% over fiscal year 2009. Salaries and benefits in particular, we dropped sharply in fiscal year 2010 because we cut several positions at that time, as soon as they became vacant. We dropped even lower in this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2011, because we allocated the employee relations manager, Kristi, to Environmental Services part-time, so our budget dropped even further. So because we're bringing her back this next year, our budget rises slightly again in the upcoming year. In the supplies and services area, we also cut significantly in that area a couple of years ago, in 2009, and that was mostly professional services for labor negotiations that we cut. We had some services for TV production work that we cut. Also, we had some money budgeted for facilitation services for meetings and so forth, and we cut all of those funds. That budget rose in this current fiscal year to $228,000 for two main reasons. One, we budgeted some money for the Community Action Commission, $70,000, to coordinate the South Coast Task Force on Youth Gangs. And then also, we received a grant this year from the Orphela Foundation to produce emergency preparedness, public service announcements. So that funding is also in for this current fiscal year, and that's why it drops by the next year, because that funding goes away. In terms of, let's see, in terms of, here's a quick, a big picture view of that reduction overall. So you can see that we've reduced our budget by 12% in the upcoming year. This just reiterates kind of the significant expenditures. Overall, we pretty much have a status quo budget. We're continuing the budget for the Community Action Commission, coordination of the Task Force on Gangs, that's at $67,000 each year, and we're returning the Employee Relations Manager to the City Administrator's Office full-time, so our salaries and benefits rise by $85,000. If you look at the positions that we have in our office, we have cut our staffing by 19% since 2009. Just to give you a quick explanation here, we cut a full position in City TV, City TV Production Specialist in 2010. We reduced staffing, a lot of the clerical staffing, we reduced one administrative specialist position also in that same year. Last year, you may remember Joan Kent, the Assistant City Administrator, she retired, so we took that opportunity to reorganize our office, and we brought in Paul Casey part-time to serve as Assistant City Administrator and gave him and Marcelo Lopez more authority, more oversight for departments. So overall, we've been able to reduce staffing considerably. We also have clerical staffing in the Mayor and Council's Office. Many of you know that we share clerical staffing between both offices, so when you combine, there was one position there in the Mayor and Council's Office also that we reduced, we've managed to reduce staffing quite a bit. Hourly employee support also makes a big difference, particularly in City TV. City TV reduced their hours for hourly employees quite a bit since 2009. In the City Administrator's Office also, we had an hourly Special Projects Manager, Don Olson, who used to work in our office, and we eliminated that position as well. So overall, we've reduced our hourly staff support by 43% in the last two years. So some of the impacts from those budget reductions, in the City Administrator's Office, we have less staff capacity available for special projects, so that means less time to update employee policies, train employees, and to handle some of the needs and concerns that arise. In City TV, we've lost that full-time staff member and then a lot of the hourly staffing. So a lot of those staff responsibilities were assigned to regular staff or other hourly employees. Inside Santa Barbara, our news, TV news magazine, that started airing quarterly instead of monthly. We still have capacity, we've reduced a capacity for two short public information videos each month, and those are something that departments request. And ad hoc meetings, we used to be able to tape ad hoc meetings like the Subcommittee on Homelessness or some other council subcommittees, and we no longer have funding for those ad hoc meetings. Moving to our work plan, in the administrative area, our primary objective is to help departments achieve their goals and objectives, so we want to help them achieve 80% of their program objectives, that's our goal each year. Also, to prepare a balanced budget, we're looking ahead to next year for fiscal year 2013. Performance Status Reports, many of you know our P3 program. We review P3 reports from all 130 programs throughout the city on a regular basis, and we submit an annual report to council. We prepare the State of the City presentation for the mayor. We present a legislative platform to council for review. We also administer the CalGrip Youth Prevention Grants. These are some, this is some grant funding that we've received in the past, we've just received another grant, but we've received that to help coordinate our efforts to prevent youth gang violence. And then also coordinating our citywide sustainability efforts. In the employee relations area, it's working with employee bargaining units to achieve cost savings. This is something that we work, you have a regular, we meet regularly to discuss ongoing negotiations. In the upcoming year, we're seeing new labor agreements with general employees, supervisory employees, hourly employees. Also looking at a new management salary plan. In City TV, they're going to continue to televise the meetings of council and the boards and commissions, producing Inside Santa Barbara Garden Wise Guys on a quarterly basis, and maintaining the broadcast system. That's something that goes unnoticed often, but there's a whole, a very large system to keep Channel 18 on the air. And that, a lot of that maintenance requires quite a bit of work. Same with council chambers, all of the microphones and equipment we have in this room and in David Gebhardt. Their staff spends a lot of time to make sure we can conduct these meetings. And then also, a key special project, as I mentioned, from the Orphela Foundation, producing the Aware and Prepare Emergency Preparedness Campaign. From here, I'll continue on into the Mayor and Council's Office, and then I can take questions later if you have them. The major activities of the Mayor and Council's Office, establishing policies and programs for the city, overseeing our programs and accomplishments, and serving as liaisons to numerous boards and commissions and advisory groups, and generally responding to the needs and concerns of citizens. Total employees, there are seven, one mayor, six council members, and one executive assistant. So you have eight full-time positions for a total budget of $725,000. If you look at the revenue, most of that is from the general fund. We don't have any special fees or charges here for this program, so it's pretty straightforward. It's just mostly the general fund subsidy and our overhead allocation. Where the money is going, mostly 72% salaries and benefits. You have a small amount for supplies and services, and then 17% of the budget goes towards allocated costs, and then a vehicle allowance, which shows up in your budget documents as part of supplies and services, but because it's a larger amount, calling that out separately. So if you look at the Mayor and Council's budget over the past few years, you'll see here that the position in fiscal year 2010, we lost one clerical position, so that's why salaries and benefits dropped there and continued to drop. We've seen some just minor increases in the upcoming budget with healthcare costs, pension costs. The vehicle allowance has stayed pretty steady. The supplies and services, we cut this area sharply in 2009. The travel, this is especially discretionary budgets for interns and meeting and travel. We cut meeting and travel and intern budgets for council members by 75% during this time, and there has been no change since. And special projects, it's a very small budget, but that was really for Sister City involvement, and now all that we pay for is our dues for the International Sister City Organization So if you look at the total expenditures since 2009, we're seeing a 10% reduction in the upcoming year. The impacts of some of those reductions, I mentioned the elimination of the clerical position, we have less clerical support for council members, and you may notice that oftentimes, we close the City Administrator's Office when we are short a person or when someone is sick. And the Mayor and Council's Office, we always maintain staffing in that office, and we put a sign up if needed, and that's been working really well. It may mean, though, slower response times for public inquiries when we have one less The work plan for Mayor and Council's Office in the upcoming year, holding the weekly council meetings and setting policy, adopting a budget, the next year's budget by June 30, 2012, acting on the staff recommendations and recommendations coming from board and commissions at each meeting. Twice each year, you appoint board and commission members for all the advisory boards, and then providing guidance to the city's negotiating group on collective bargaining agreements, on salaries and benefits. This brings me to the end. If you have any questions, I'm happy to help answer them. I also have a number of staff here who can, yeah, a couple of them haven't looked back.
Number two. Mr. House?
Just a quick question, because we, the city council, same people, are also the redevelopment agency board. Does any of the funding for our work here come directly, I mean, it does, right? A certain amount of the funding comes directly from redevelopment agency to support the work that we do?
Comes through the overhead allocation.
I see, okay. And it's a relatively small amount, as I recall, but it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it's separated out here?
No, and as I recall, what we do is we go through your agendas, and then we count up the number of RDA items versus the other, and that's how we come up with it.
Interesting. Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Self?
Thank you. I had brought this up before, and to Mr. Armstrong, is that the possibility, and I don't know if this would take a vote of the people, that I don't think that mayor and council positions should be considered a career, therefore pensionable, and that for having us instead pay into Social Security and not be part of the PERS problem. I guess that would take a discussion by all of us, but I don't know, is that something that's a vote?
Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, Council Member Self, I'm trying to think, the city's participation in PERS is in the city charter, and I guess the answer is that we probably have to research it. There is, PERS at times allows some flexibility for some people to opt out of PERS. I know that's one possibility, that certain positions can opt out of PERS. I doubt there's a way to opt into Social Security for the city of Santa Barbara, because I've never heard of.
I don't mean the city in general, just mayor and council.
Well, also, I think if you look at the total liability of mayor and council to PERS, one is you have to be here for five years in order to get vested, so unless you worked for the city, you have to at least get re-elected to get vested. And then with term limits, there's only a certain number of years we would actually be eligible unless we started working for the city after, not we or an elected official. So it's an interesting question. I just think the bigger financial liability is relatively small compared to other.
It is relatively small, but I think watching pennies is important, and that if you look at two terms on council, eight years, two terms as mayor, another eight years, it's a possibility of 16 years. And I'm not trying to hurt anybody through this, it's just that, is this, we are people's representatives. We don't work, in my opinion, for the city. We're looking out for the city's interests, but our primary obligation is to the citizens, and I see myself as one of them, and think that we should be one of them. That's, that's a bigger discussion. But if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say how appreciative I am of the TV program that Mr. Ruggeri does such a good job on. It's a great tool for good research and keeping on top of things, because you can't go to all the meetings, and particularly planning and commission to go back and review, you know, and if you get really tired at night, you can look at the city council meeting again, and, but it's, I mean, it's really, it really is enormously helpful. I can't imagine how difficult it is to get stuff up so fast. So to you and to Mr. Armstrong and everybody involved, I want to thank you very much.
I'd have to echo that. There's so many people that come up to me and say, I saw either us on 18 or something, another board or commission, or Inside Santa Barbara story, that really helps us get the message out about what's going on, so good transparency there, too. Mr. House?
Just, I didn't see where it mentioned, and you didn't go to every little detail, but in the same vein, how much we appreciate the translators that make this accessible to a lot of our constituents who would have a very difficult time otherwise really participating and understanding what's going on here, and I really do appreciate that. I didn't see it called out in any line, but we're not at that level of detail, I think, in this report. But it's only that that's continuing to be part of the budget that we have for the coming year, correct? All right, thank you.
Anything else from the council on this item? Okay, so we are going to adjourn, and our next budget meeting is, is it May 2nd? Or, I don't know off the top of my head, it's, whatever it is, we said it was last Tuesday, but for now, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
And I would mention to the council that some of you, I think, have indicated you may be attending the UCSB Economic Forecast, and as I recall, it's May the 5th.
May 5th, Thursday.
And we're looking to see if we can at least push the meeting back that we have that day, and we'll get in touch with you and let you know.
Okay.
And we would also post a new schedule, but we'll let you know on that.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, thank you.